It's 5:30, so a call to order this meeting for Monday, March 23rd, 2020. Carl, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonas. Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Here, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for the Monday meeting of March 16th. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
It's moved.
Second.
Motion from Rux and a second from Bunsonas. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Next, we'll move right along to the open forum. We've got Kelly Jorgensen, Director of Environmental Compliance with AGP, presenting an update on the hydrogen sulfide gas production situation. So, Kelly, if you'd make your way to the podium and make sure that the green light is on that little microphone so we can hear you and the people watching online. Welcome back.
Thanks. I think we've got some good news. I think we had good news last week when I called in as well, but we've continued to see progress. We started last week, in addition to the hydrogen peroxide addition, we also started some addition of caustic solution to adjust the pH upwards so that the sulfides aren't as readily available as well. Had a consultant on-site for a couple of days last week monitoring and adjusting both the hydrogen peroxide as well as the caustic solution adjustment as well for controlling the pH. He was able to also do a little bit of monitoring within the manholes that weren't otherwise occupied by the vending systems or the Accrologers there on Production Avenue and Capital Avenue as well. So, we got a little bit of data on that. We've been pretty successful, provided an update to Lynn Lander, the city, this, over the past weekend, which is kind of an update of that. Some of the highlights of that is we've been able to maintain a pH up close to nine. We monitored that actually downstream of our system as well, just to see what it is in the city's collection system, and it's been running basically between about an 8.2 up to about an 8.8 or so there, so adding enough there that we're maintaining a high pH there. The dissolved oxygen, which is an indication of how much available oxidizing capacity is being carried through in the system, as he measured that, we were getting dissolved oxygen levels of anywhere from about 1.6 up to nearly 5. So, the anoxic or anaerobic conditions within the collection system there on Production Avenue and Capital Avenue are virtually nonexistent right now. We also noted that the temperatures in the collection system, they're just along the first stretch just after exiting AGP, were running in the mid-50s, 54 to 57 range primarily. So, that's good news as well. We've tried to do a number of things onsite to level out the flow on our skim pit. We've added variable frequency drives there to level out the flow there. We have additional actions underway to see if we can level out our flow from our RO reject, which is basically an on or off at this point, and so we get heavier or lower flows, and it affects the temperature at any given moment as well. And so, that makes controlling the pH at a steady level and also the dissolved oxygen a little bit more challenging when you have those, but overall, I think our flows have begun to level out as well, and we've still got some more work to do on that. Also, we got back some sulfide and sulfate measurements that we did in our, within our system. Got those back early last week and have taken a look at those, and we pulled another set of samples. We've got some confusing numbers that are coming from that, not what we expected. But, we also did have the consultant monitor the sulfide levels within the collection system as well, and those sulfides were typically running right in the neighborhood of 10 to 20. So, there aren't very many sulfides available for conversion to hydrogen sulfide gas left either. So, all of those are good signs. Also, this past week, we submitted to Peggy and copied Lynn Lander and Ron Wagner, the, or, excuse me, Wager, as far as our plan of action from the compliance order, and so we anticipate setting up a conference call with them after they've had a chance to review that and discuss the contents of it and where we go from there. So, that summarizes a little bit more as far as where we see moving forward. We are starting to look beyond just controlling our existing process to looking at potential modifications to the process, just as broadening our scope as far as potential solutions for lowering the BOD, but as far as the issues of hydrogen sulfide and flow, those are a lot better under control right now than where we were just a couple of weeks ago.
So, Kelly, one of my questions that I've got, I'm curious about the temperature change. Was that something that directly was impacted by a measure that you guys had taken, or what, how would you say, because it was much hotter water that was being?
Well, the permit that we have requires us to record and report both the low and the high temperature, and so we were seeing low temperatures down around 50 and high temperatures up around 100 and occasional peak around 110. But, those are just instantaneous readings throughout the day and not an average of the day. We took a look at the data for about the first week, week and a half of March, and if you just took a numerical average of the readings over that, the temperature was about 76 degrees. Of course, that's not a flow-weighted average, just a time-weighted average, and so the temperatures that we've seen around 100 and stuff aren't lasting for a long period of time, but we do see them, and we see a wide fluctuation in then just because of our variability in our flow. If we have our process water, for example, and we don't have our RO reject, which is a cooler water blowing down at the same time, then your measured temperature is going to be more, it's going to be higher just because it's your process water primarily and you don't have the other flow. So, we think that these temperatures that we're seeing, just by equalizing or leveling out the flow, that we'll see those peaks and valleys as far as flow temperature level out a lot more, probably in the 70 to 80 degrees. Of course, you've got some additional cooling as it flows down and through the collection system as well, but I think on Wednesday and Thursday in the first manhole there on Production Street, it was about 55 degrees, so. I mean, we're seeing some lower temperatures. We're trying, like I say, to monitor that at different places through our processes as well. We've got the flume, then we've got a lift station where everything collects, and so you've got a little bit of retention and mixing time there as well, so.
Sure. Product of coordinated effort.
Yeah.
Has anyone got any?
Yeah.
Mr. Bunsonas.
Regarding the plan that you submitted, and maybe this is more of a question for our staff, does the state get involved in that conversation regarding the plan?
We did send them a copy of the plan.
Oh, yeah, okay, so the conversation you're going to have in the coming weeks here with the city will also involve the state? Okay. I read a little bit of that today, and you're proposing that the pretreatment is, that timeline is too aggressive.
Correct.
And, so what, just kind of review what you think you can accomplish from here until, I think it was midsummer, to kind of get an idea of what, where you needed to go?
Like I mentioned, primarily, our efforts so far have been to the review of the existing process and the way that it's designed and make sure it's operating correctly in the equipment. We've got a plant shutdown coming up in mid-May where we'll look at that again, but we've also started taking a look at potential modifications to the process. We would rather see if we can't reduce the BOD within the process rather than to add on a pretreatment. And so, we'll be pursuing those efforts internally AGP and involving some of the equipment and process engineers in that process at the same time that the consultant's taking a look at potential avenues for pretreatment systems addition if it's, if we determine it's needed. So, we're not abandoning it.
Right, right.
We're trying to run two parallel paths at the same time.
And I'm not sure, did it sound like from the discussion that you had in your initial presentation, the BOD levels had been decreasing just through your efforts?
We think they will. We'll see. We don't have, I mean, we don't have a lot of data at that point now. Those are some other things that we're looking at as far as what we can do for temporary measures as well before any modifications to the process or pretreatment system to bring the BOD levels down also.
Sure. About two birds with one stone situation we're getting out of this. Do any other council members have any questions? Kelly, while he's here. City staff, all right, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your attention to this matter and taking it so seriously, coming to visit us numerous times now to keep us informed about the matter. Look forward to working with you as time goes on.
No problem, and I'll continue to provide those weekly updates to Lynn that he can circulate with you, and then we'll just play it by ear on a week-by-week basis if there's a need for me to call in and provide an additional verbal update, or if you prefer to see my mug.
Before you leave, Councilman Bunsonas has another point to make.
Last time you were here, you stressed good communication from both directions. Do you feel you're getting that from the city currently?
I think so, yeah. I mean, Peggy's always been great to communicate with, it's just been more some of the other thoughts, and I don't think we've had any other issues that have come up that we've been unaware of, so.
Okay.
So, I trust just with raising that awareness among us that if there are other issues that come up, that we would readily be notified and brought into the loop, but I don't think we've had any to test that yet. But, communications, I think with Peggy and her group remain, remain good, been very cooperative for things that we wanted to do, and we had the consultant here readily made opening up the collection system and being able to monitor and take some samples within the manholes through the collection system that we were, our consultant was able to go out and do that without any problems at all, so.
Thank you very much for coming there, Kelly.
You're welcome.
I don't believe we have any other people signed up to speak during open forum. Oh, Peggy. Have a wonderful night. Thanks for visiting us. I thought she had some information for us. And Lou, if you'd like, I can end this call, or you're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of our meeting.
Well, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and turn on the mic and, or, you can end the call.
Sounds great. Have a great night.
Not civic-minded, is he?
Move right along to old business. First, we've got Resolution Number 200302R regarding the annual promotion fund allocation. Caught me off-guard changing that on the screen there, Lynn. To the Northern State University Educational Impact Campaign motion to take from the table for consideration possible approval of Resolution 200301, or 02R. Last week, there were some typographical errors that we saw fit to change before taking a vote on the measure. Lynn, those have all been corrected?
Yes, if you go through the resolution, you'll see that I made some substantial changes within the resolution, and as I stated last week, we're hoping for approval of this from the city council so we can register it within city records for the future.
So, I'd take a motion to take that off the table so that we can get a possible approval.
Moved to remove it from the table.
Second.
So, we've got a motion from Ronain and a second from Rux on that. Does anyone have any questions about that or concerns? Otherwise, we'll take a voice vote. Please, all in favor of removing this from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It's removed from the table. Now, I'd be happy to take a motion for the possible approval of that resolution.
We already have a motion from last week.
Yeah, fair enough. Processes and procedures, where's my little book? I don't know who made the motion or the second, but does anyone have any discussion aside from the points that Lynn was able to address typographically?
I would just thank Lynn for making those changes.
Sounds good. Well, then, Carl, I'm going to ask you to take a roll call vote on this matter, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonas.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
I will abstain. The motion does carry. Next, we've got the consent counter, possible approval of items A through E. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Moved.
Second.
Motion from Ronain and a second from Remley. Does anyone have any comments? Otherwise, we'll do a voice vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Next, we've got new business request to hang different-sized denim jeans and shoes throughout the community to bring awareness for sexual assault, child abuse for the entire month of April. Possible approval to allow hanging the denim jeans and shoes throughout the community. It looks like we've got you here tonight. Gina, thank you for coming to speak on behalf of Safe Harbor. You've got the floor.
Yes, I am, for those of you who don't know me, I am Gina Karst, I'm the Director of Safe Harbor. I have Mackenzie Girth, who is our real advocate, who is actually spearheading this, but she was a little overwhelmed to come in here and speak with you all, so I'm here on her behalf. But, so, we're doing the same thing that we did last year, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and then also Child Abuse Prevention Awareness. So, what we'd like to do is hang the denim jeans on the overpass again, and then to add to that, because of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness, we want to add sneakers or kids' shoes to it to represent the five children that are killed each day from child abuse, and just to kind of have some more representation for the child abuse prevention and then also the sexual assault awareness. So, that's really why we're here, to see if we can do that same idea there. Oh, and I'm sorry, we also, the shoes, we also would like to do out at Anderson Park in front of there on Sixth Avenue, to be able to put them, we're going to put them on pegboards and have them displayed out there as another thing. How we're hoping to do it, since we don't have interns right now, because of all the COVID-19, we're hoping that each day we can hang five pairs of shoes, just kind of keep doing a daily representation of the five children that are killed each day. So, if that doesn't work, then we'll just put all the shoes out there and so everybody can kind of see.
What is, there's existing pegboard that exists out there?
Nope, no, we'll put that out there.
Got it.
It would be a pegboard that we'd put out and try to weigh down with sandbags. We're not totally sure on how that all works, but we'll get it situated.
Never seen the one try.
I know.
Brett's so far back in the corner that he can't speak up on behalf of the signed people.
We're in favor of it.
Sounds great. We've got a motion from Bunsonas. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Motion and a second from Reif. Is any discussion or questions for Gina or Safe Harbor in general?
Yeah, Gina, I would ask during this time, is there anything that Safe Harbor needs from the community that may be different than in the past?
No, right now, we're doing okay. The one thing that I just would hope that the community can keep in mind, that this is a really scary time for victims. They're more isolated at this time, they're being, they don't have their usual appointments that they can go to to meet with caseworkers and doing the things that they could, you know, have resources or get kind of respite from whatever they're enduring at home. So, just, you know, for the community, be mindful of the victims and not just talking about domestic violence, but also in child abuse, because kids are home alone, they're more likely, there's some that are being neglected, there's some that are being more abused than what they might have been normally, because again, they don't, they're not in school, they don't have Boys and Girls Club, the Y, whatever programs they might be involved in, so just making sure that the community is aware and doing what they can to, you know, call people to get help, law enforcement, us, if we need to do some safety planning, we can do that. But, yeah, but otherwise, we're doing okay. The shelter is, it's going well, so we're good right now, but thank you.
Sounds great. I think we can do a voice vote on this one, so why don't we go ahead and do that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Congratulations. Good luck on your promotion. Thanks for all the hard work over there. Next, we'll move right along to the request for property tax abatement for property in the city limits, possible approval of property tax abatement for the 1924 Miller Lane in the total amount of $1,836.93 with the city share being $9.77. Carl, what can you tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see in the narrative, this has been recommended for approval by the Brown County Assessor's Office. The city attorney, Ron Wager, and I discussed this at great length. At this point, we are also recommending approval, however, it should be noted that during the County Board of Equalization meeting that's upcoming, we will probably want to appeal that tax exemption. We don't feel it's appropriate for this particular property.
Sounds great. Can I get a motion, please, from someone to do that, to the possible approval of the abatement?
Moved.
Second.
A motion from Bunsonas and a second from Ronain.
Can I just, can you tell us what would be the reason that we would be arguing that point?
Councilmember Bunsonas, the reason is, is that an original application was submitted on this property in 2019, and at that time, the Board of Equalization approved the requested abatement, or, I'm sorry, exemption based upon just its view of the exemptions that are allowed. Subsequently, the county, although it had been approved, failed to actually get it noted in their records, and that's why this is here before you today as an abatement and a refund request. And our time has passed to have contested that original approval of the exemption, but the reason that we're going to put in an application or an appeal of the exemption is because it doesn't fall within any of the allowable exemptions under statute. It was identified as a piece of property that's available for public use, or when it's in fact dedicated just for the residents of this homeowners' association. So, that's the reason why. So, we'll be going in front of the Board of County of Equalization on our appeal, and we'll be setting forth an argument that this is not eligible for exemption under statute.
So, why did the county approve it?
I think it kind of comes before the county as a package, a bunch of others were all in there. There was no, if you'll notice, did they have the original rec, application? There was no recommendation by the Assessor, by the Director of Equalization, and I don't know why, but it just kind of went through as a package with a bunch of others.
So, the director feels the same as we do, that this should not be tax exempt?
We have not conferred with the director on that.
Didn't talk to him about that particular issue. So, we've got a motion and a second to make that property tax abatement. It sounds like it'd be something that gets worked out here before the next property taxes become due, so I will take a, actually, a roll call vote on that one. Carl, can you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonas.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got Finance Offered Office to offer a one-time $10 credit for the utility customers who sign up for automatic ACH withdrawal for utility accounts between March 24th, 2020, and April 30th, 2020. Possible approval to allow the finance officer to, the one-time $10 credit for utility customers. Can I get a motion for that?
Moved. Second.
A motion from Bunsonas and a second from Rux. Carl, what can you tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. The ACH program that we have at the Finance Office to pay utility bills is really something that we've been trying to market for the last couple of years. We have seen the use of that particular program grow. It's the one that works best for us in the office, it's the cheapest for us, and it's so easy for the customer, once they sign up, it's automatic. We do send out bills so you know how much we're going to be withdrawing, so you still know what day it's going to come out and whatnot, but you don't have to write a check, you don't have to come down to the office, and in the office, we just thought that this would be a good time to point out this particular option so that you don't have to get out of your house if you don't need to. We thought that this little incentive of a one-time $10 credit might get some people that were on the fence to jump in, and we thought it was worth a shot. We brought to the council mainly for the publicity, because you guys get all the, all the views.
When people make their requests from here in the next week, I'll be sure to tell them about this credit. Sounds good, so we've got a motion and a second, all in favor. Well, well. Councilman Rux.
For the ACH, I know we charge an extra fee for credit cards, but the ACH is, has no additional fees.
No additional fees.
Okay.
What's the percentage of transactions that are credit card-based?
Credit card-based, gosh, I looked at that last week, too. It's lower than this.
And you charge them how much to do the credit card?
We charge a 2.5% convenience fee for credit charge, nothing for debit cards, we aren't allowed to do that, and also for the telephone call, it's the same rate, but the telephone call use of credit card is one that we're trying to discourage for a couple of reasons. One is that security is tougher, because now you've got the credit card number that's on both ends, and, you know, from a security standpoint, it just leaves it open for possible error or fraud, whatever the case may be. Two, it is a higher rate when you call in over the phone. We do get charged a higher merchant fee for that, so we're not pushing that, it's available, we're not pushing it.
How would someone sign up for the ACH? Do they have to come down to City Hall?
You know, in the past, we've had them come down because we always wanted to get a copy of a blank check so that we made sure all the routing information was correct, the account was correct, but we've been talking, I think we may be able to just do something like that over the phone, as long as we can verify with the bank that the routing number is correct and the account number is correct, so that we don't have to have someone come down. That's one of the things in this point in time we're trying to avoid, is to have people coming down as little as possible.
So, currently, they fill out a form, bring a copy of the canceled check.
Correct.
Maybe they just call on the phone for the time being, or fill out?
Or fill out the form and we can verify it, and, yep, if they can fill out the form and email it.
Is that something that's available online, or could it be?
It will be.
Okay, sounds great. Definitely let people know about that. Why don't you give us a voice vote for that then, Carl?
Voice vote or roll call?
Yeah, let's see, it's a roll call. It involves money, I didn't know if that was supposed to.
Yeah, okay, that, okay, very good, very good. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonas.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to the Section 5310 Preventative Maintenance Grant Agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for Ride Line. Possible approval and authorization of the city manager to sign Section 5310 Grant Agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Ride Line. Tom Wanty is here to speak to us here today. Thanks for coming, Tom. What can you tell us about it?
Typical grant with the state of South Dakota, basically, we need to have a signed document to get this money. This is our money for our preventative maintenance that we get. We never know from year to year when it's going to show up and how much we're going to get this year. We are actually getting a fairly sizable amount, $16,921.45, which is about $3,000 more than what we had last year on it, so we're happy to have that helping keep the buses on the road, so.
Sounds good. Can I get a motion for possible approval?
Moved.
Got a motion from Johnson, who is that that said something over here? A second from Lunsman on that. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wanty while he's here? Otherwise, why don't we take a voice vote on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thanks for coming in.
Can you give an update on ridership during this time?
Oh, yeah, while you're here.
This, this, last week, we, our rider numbers were at 245 rides provided. The week before, we were at 1,489.
Wow.
So, we are down roughly 81%.
Wow.
So, Tom, I know that 3M was gracious enough to give us those masks, and that's part of the procedure for the time being. That's been going pretty well.
Yeah, we did switch it up a little bit, we did switch to. Yeah, we did switch it up a little bit. We did switch to only offering the masks for people if they were showing any symptoms. Otherwise, we were going to run out of the masks really quickly. But we haven't had any complaints from anybody, you know, that we've offered the masks to. And everybody seems to be still, you know, the ones that need it real desperately to travel are still using it. Our numbers are dropping. I think last I checked for tomorrow, we only have forty-three scheduled rides. And that counts the will calls for the returns as well, so.
Wow.
People are staying home. You know, they're doing, they're doing what they're being asked, so.
Definitely.
You know, all across the state, all transit agencies across the state are seeing significantly drop numbers in their ridership. It's, it's causing a lot of problems.
Thanks for coming and sharing that with us, and congratulations on the grant, Tom. Next, we'll move on to the big recommendation for the 2020 Street Maintenance Concrete Repair Project. Possible approval to the award Wrighton-Sudlow the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. And authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign necessary documents after approval by the city attorney, Robin. You're here to speak about that.
Two bidders, very competitive this year. Very pleased with the bids. Wrighton-Sudlow is the low bidder. They've done this project before, and we recommend their approval.
Moved.
Who will approve?
Second.
I've got a motion from Ronain and a second from Bunsonis. Does anyone have any questions for Ron on this process? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the bid recommendation for the 2020 Accessible Sidewalk Quadrant Improvement. Possible approval to award the bid to CWF Masonry in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirteen cents. And authorize the city manager and finance officer to sign the documents after approval by the attorney, Robin. What can you tell us about those quadrants?
Had four bidders. We actually had somebody interested from out of town. So obviously, they didn't find enough work in their own town, and they decided they'd take a shot here. Our three local bidders were very competitive once again. And it's always a good thing when our engineering department is the high bidder, so that's, that's the way we want it. And this, this is, we're making really good progress on these accessible quadrants. We will be down under a hundred now. We started, when we started this program, we were over fifteen hundred quadrants that were non-compliant. We'll be under a hundred when we get done with this, this portion of the contract. And then we will have additional ones that we will do on the mill and overlay. We're making good headway. Once we get these done, the non-compliant, then we'll go into the partially compliant. This will be a long, long process to continue to work on it, but it's, it's a one-year-at-a-time type thing. We recommend approval of CWF as the low bidder.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion from Johnson and a second from Olson. Does anyone have any question about the quadrant program? Other one, Josh.
Robin, previously, you talked about maybe using a different material. What are these going to be made out of?
These will be a composite material, which we've used in the past. We did some comparisons this last week looking at the pre-cast concrete ones that we initially used. And those are falling apart all over town. The salt content and just the weather really has beaten those up. These composite ones are not doing too badly. We went back to look at projects from 2016. And they are, for the most part, holding up. There are, you can tell when there's a skid steer, something that's a little more aggressive. They'll peel the tops, these domes off of them. We did do some checking on the, on the pre, or the cast iron types, which are much heavier to manipulate into place. And we found that our costs will about double to do that. And so it's a balancing act. Do we want to do half the number? We're only getting, let's say, thirty to forty of these done a year. Do we want to cut that down to twenty to, you know, then, then we're back at that time range where we're going to be over five years before we finish up the non-compliance. So we are, we are planning on doing them with the composite this year. And we'll take another look and maybe, maybe we can see some of the costs for the cast iron go down. And we'll also see what the state is doing on their ADA project through Sixth Avenue. That will be a two-year project that they just bid, and I believe those were cast iron that they were trying. So we may see if those bidders get a, a better comfort level for putting them in.
Sounds good. We've got a motion and a second. Carl, why don't you give me a vote on the possible approval for that bid?
Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis. Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got change order number three and payments three and four for the Public Safety Generator Project. Possible approval of change order number three in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Payments three and four in the total amount of two hundred and two thousand, twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents to Quest Construction LLC for work on the Aberdeen Public Safety Generator Project. Robin, we banned all your stuff here together.
We're nearly complete with this. We've got a little bit of site work to do yet. I know the chief is, some paperwork in front of him, but I believe they've started up the generator. They have it working. Everything seems to be going pretty well. We've got protection up for the gas lines now. So now it's really a matter of cleanup and kind of getting rid of, or getting things prepared for that, that summertime where we can grow grass again, do some of that, so. Recommend approval of the change order and payments.
Moved. Second.
Who is the first? Motion from Olson and a second from Bunsonis. Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please, for those payments?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis. Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we'll move on to the approval of bill list for March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
Moved.
Second.
Motion from Johnson and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any question on the bills? We've got nothing else to add. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson. Bunsonis. Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Well, abstain, but the motion still does carry. Next, we'll move along to the city manager's report. Lynn, what have you got? The people on TV are going to be so disappointed if they can't hear you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. Councilmembers, I provided each of you with a copy of a flow chart that I put together this afternoon. Actually, this was a very fluid thing as, as things continued to develop with the, with the governor throughout the afternoon. But what I've put together is, is just a very neutral type of explanation as to the various authorities that are involved in a public health emergency. And as you can see, once there is that situation, we have the, the four authorities that we're looking at are the mayor, the city council, the city health officer, and our governor and state legislature. And in orange, and I don't know how well it's coming on the screen, but in orange, under the mayor, by, by statute, a mayor and a city manager form of government can take command and govern by a proclamation during a time of public emergency. So I wanted to make it clear to everyone that there is that authority within the mayor, even in a city manager form, to, at some point, in the absence of any other type of, of action going on, could take command and govern in that public emergency. For the city council, we are referring to general powers. And the city council has the power, or any city has the power, to do what may be necessary or expedient for the promotion of health or the suppression of disease. And that's, that's a statute dealing with public health. And then at, more generally, under its police powers, it can promote public health and safety and the general welfare. And what that comes down to at a more granular level is that the city council, by charter and by statute, can pass an emergency ordinance to meet a public health crisis. Our city health officer, and if you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we modified our, our city health board and city health officer to eliminate the city health board. And the reason for that was because the State Department of Health had become so robust in its ability to deal with a contagious or infectious disease situation. The city health officer is a, is a Dakota Territory almost type of a creation back in the days when there weren't, there wasn't near the, the system in place that there is today. And so today, we have a city health officer, Brett Bill, our planning and zoning director, is also the city health officer. And he has the, the power by, by state law and by ordinance to quarantine persons and premises of persons suffering infections. And could, if, once he's issued a directive for a quarantine, he has the ability to enforce that directive by a class-two misdemeanor. I will tell you that of the four bodies that you see here, it's, the health officer at this point is not necessarily your, your primary person to be leading this. Having had the state step in significantly, he would defer to the State Department of Health in its, in its command of this typical, this, this current emergency. And lastly, you have the governor and the state legislature, which can deal with a public health emergency. And I want you to look at what would be the, the left flow chart on that, which is the governor may declare emergency that is beyond the capability of local governments and assume emergency management powers. And as you all know, the, the governor has done that in this, in this instance, in the COVID-19 pandemic. She may then, you, under that power, issue executive orders consistent with statewide system of disease control. And lastly, with that power, she can order cities to implement the requirements of the executive order. On, on the last box is, is the legislature itself can use emergency powers to pass statutes for immediate preservation of public health. It doesn't appear, from what we've seen to date, that the legislature is moving in that direction. But as all of you are aware, our governor has been providing daily updates as to her efforts in combating the pandemic. And is this a good opportunity to go into the executive order?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Just came in at three-thirty this afternoon.
So I will move the mic a little bit, but at three-thirty this afternoon, the governor issued Executive Order 2020-08, which is, means that within the space of this short year, she's already issued eight executive orders. The vast majority of them have been regarding the COVID pandemic. The most, this recent executive order does a number of things, and I think every member of the council was provided that. I don't know if you would have been able to read that or had it printed out for you. But it does direct through paragraphs one through ten what individual South Dakotans should be doing. And then at, beginning at paragraph eleven through thirteen discusses enclosed retail businesses that promote public gatherings. Paragraphs fourteen through fifteen deal with healthcare organizations. And lastly, sixteen through twenty deal with local and municipal governments. And for those of you who have that, the, the, therefore recital for the, for the order says that she does hereby order and direct the following and directs that all local and municipal governments within the state of South Dakota should take particular action. And she has those set forth for this body in sixteen through twenty. And just so, as if, as if you haven't been aware, we know that a number of cities within the, within the state have already been proactively moving to take some kind of legislative action. And when I say legislative, I mean passing an ordinance. Others are considering that, but it would be my, and again, this has all come very quickly. We haven't, none of us have had a whole lot of time to digest this yet. But this does appear to, if not pave the way, almost direct city councils, city commissions, and county commissions to take appropriate actions consistent with her executive order. So I wanted to, to make sure that the council is aware that in looking back at the flow chart that I put together, where the last item that the city council can do is pass emergency ordinances, that would be consistent with what we're seeing in Watertown, Rapid City, Yankton. Sioux Falls, I think, is now taking some action, Huron. So it is happening. Frankly, even some smaller communities like Mulbridge are contemplating these types of actions. So just wanted to be, the council to be aware of how that legal authority seems to run amongst the various bodies and how that flows downward. So if there's any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer what I can.
Councilman Ronain, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess I would be curious what these other communities have done by ordinance. And secondly, if we decided to go that route, passing an emergency ordinance, how quickly could we get an ordinance in place that would be effective and how about lawful?
The ordinance process is, is standard as far as the first and second reading. There does need to be a five intervening days. And I, just so you're aware, I use a sandwich calculation on that. Where you have the day of the first reading, five days, and then it would be, so you need to look at it as a seven-day period of time. So if the council were inclined to do something, you could do, you could have a special meeting, like we did last week. Set up a special meeting, do a first reading of an ordinance, wait five mandatory days. And on the sixth day, after the date of the meeting, you could then have a second reading. By our charter and by state law, that can then, because it's an emergency type of an ordinance, it can become immediately effective. But it can only last sixty days, and then it has to expire. So that's the second part of your question. The first part of your question is, what are the other cities, what are the ordinances looking like from the other cities? It looks to me like they're following a fairly standard template of, which includes the recitals of the, the emergency pandemic and how this is impacting South Dakota. And then it goes on to identify the types of actions that are taken, which are typically involving some types of closures. And lastly, what's not being closed by this. But I will tell you that the closures seem to be quite consistent with what the executive order is from, from Governor Noem. It tends to utilize the same kind of restrictions on what, what businesses would be involved, which are the enclosed retail businesses that promote public gatherings, essentially identified specifically as bars, restaurants, breweries, cafes, coffee shops, recreational athletic facilities, health clubs, or entertainment venues. So when we talk about Rapid City or, or Huron, or I want to say Mulbridge, for example, they all seem to be using similar templates and putting their ordinance together.
You know, I'd like to, to ask that, that such an ordinance be brought before this council next week, similar, similar to what that you just described. And, and Councilmember Remley provided me a copy of the Rapid City ordinance, which does very much along the lines of what you indicated. But I, but I think that type of ordinance ought to be considered by this council next week.
So I, I'm going to cut in here for just a moment. I've been in communication with nearly every bar that remains open. A lot have voluntarily closed to kind of get a feeling of their situation. And I think if, the way that it worked in Brookings, we've had a lot of communication with other cities on what they're doing. All the bars, all the restaurants voluntarily closed their dining areas. If we could achieve that before next week, you'd see no need for such an ordinance.
The, the ordinances appear to be broader than, than just bars and restaurants. And I think that would be a good conversation for us to have. I think the Rapid City ordinance talks about, I guess we don't have any cigar, cigar bars, so we don't have to worry about those. But it has.
Trampoline parks.
Hoot laundries, and it has recreational facilities that are closed. But I think it would be, I'd like to have that conversation if there are, if, you're right. If we have a hundred percent voluntary compliance, then it would seem to be unnecessary.
Sounds good. It looks like we're heading well within that direction at this point, I would say, from the conversations that I've had.
I would agree with that.
I've, I've talked to several bar owners, and some of them are taking it upon themselves to make, take precautions. And. to make, take precautions and, like, you know, taking out their popcorn machine, their free popcorn machine, peanuts, canceling public events like karaoke nights. The problem with that is that some bars have shut down already, and the bars that have stayed open are going to be probably busier than, than normal because all the other bars are closed. So we might have to have a mandatory shutdown, or, but, because not everybody's going to comply, I don't think. And maybe it's too early for it? I don't know. But I've had several conversations, and some bars, like I said, have already closed down, and some are thinking of doing that. And they've all gotten together and said, well, let's all just quit, close down. And then we can have, you know, the ones that serve food can have curbside, you know, delivery, call in, have curbside delivery. No, no enclosed dining is what they're saying. So a lot of them are, are in agreement, like, like what the mayor says, maybe they'll all just close down on their own, but we, we can't really, can't really predict that.
I, I think though, at this point, you know, in bringing up Rob, Rob's proposal of next week, bring it up next week, it'd be second reading the week after that, you're already in the middle of April. And then this, of course, is done May 2nd anyway. So.
What is done May 2nd?
Her executive order ends May 2nd. So you're talking two or three weeks. And, and for me, if we're going to do something like this, it should be done as quickly as possible, because if we hold on, we're, we're three weeks out.
It needs to be fair, too.
Needs to be fair.
Everybody.
And I'm not suggesting, suggesting we should sunset it on May 2, just because of the mayor, the governor's order sunsets in May 2. We're not going to be done with this in, on May 2.
True, but could we, could we go beyond what the mayor's recommendation is?
Keep me out of this.
Or the governor's. Because the governor says her.
I abide by the recommendation, but I'm not making.
Her ends on May 2nd, 2020.
What I will tell you is that the, the council has independent authority if it determines that there's a, that there's a crisis. So arguably, it could extend beyond the governor's time.
Councilman Johnson.
I have a question for the city attorney. How should we interpret the first box, upper left, where it says mayor may take command and govern by proclamation during time of public emergency? The word proclamation there, can you explain what that would entail?
First of all, I should apologize to you folks, now that we're, now that staff is, is modeling social distancing, I don't, my computer is over there.
Ah, sure.
And so I, what I will tell you is that the, the way I interpret proclamation would be consistent with what we see as a, as a routine type proclamation from our mayor on occasion. The mayor does have that authority to, to determine that there is a, a, hold on here, I think here it is. Here, I can, I'll read the language to you so you can, so you can see how, how unhelpful it can be in, in answering your question. He may take command of the police of the municipality, appoint special police, and govern the municipality by proclamation during times of public danger or emergency. And during such times, he shall have such powers and authorities to call for assistance as are given by the mayor in 9-29-17. And here's where it's important to, to point out to you what 9-29-17 is. That is the power of the mayor to summon aid in preserving order. And when necessary, to call upon every inhabitant of the municipality to aid in enforcing the laws and ordinances, and to call out any organized militia to help suppress riots and other disorderly conduct, or carrying into effect any lower ordinance. So it is, it is not, that particular power is not well suited for what we're dealing with here. If, if a mayor chose to take that, the mayor would act by proclamation, it would declare that this particular emergency is, falls within the languages that I just read you. And then it would be a question at that point of determining whether that proclamation was properly ordered.
So specifically, would an edict or proclamation from the mayor require the approval of all other eight members of the council, or would it be unilateral?
Well, the way I interpret it is that it could be unilateral.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think that's intended to be that way.
Yeah. So I think a couple of important points to bring up, since it's kind of top of discussion here. I think that the city and many of the leaders throughout this city have done a great job with preventative measures. In fact, I think we're really well prepared for this. I know that we've got one case on the books here. That case appears to already be recovered from documentation that I've seen. It's not unlikely there's more cases throughout this community, but I do believe that we're really well prepared, better than in previous virus outbreaks in the past, because there's been so much attention drawn to this, so much individual directive for social distancing, hygiene, self-quarantining for the sick, which, you know, definitely wouldn't have been communicated as well in the past. The CDC also put out 15 days to slow the spread, a guideline for America, and I believe that that will, I think that that'll cover the time period between now and when we see the peak of this thing from the modeling that I'm seeing, which causes me to be very helpful. The people that I've been in communication with, in terms of the public, in terms of small businesses, have all expressed their very serious concern about this. I don't think anybody feels like they're, like they're taking it too lightly. And I think that even the bars and restaurants that maintain being open for this time have made their adjustments, as Mark said, to allow for spacing and doing a more thorough job of cleaning as, as required and directed. So I'm feeling very confident about our ability to, to take this, this thing on, and I'll continue those discussions in the meantime, to, to see if we can come to an agreement on a voluntary basis that doesn't require us to, to put our, you know, put the foot down on, on these small businesses. As I mentioned to a lot of you, one of my big concerns are the hourly employees that are living paycheck to paycheck, that have no reserve funds, that will be put out of work immediately. In my call today with the mayors throughout the state, the mayor of Rapid City acknowledged that he was aware that nearly 1,000 people were going to lose their jobs the minute that their ordinance took effect. Now, 1,000 people without jobs is a very, very serious thing. It exhausts the resources of the charities, it begins to draw on the community in all kinds of different ways. I think that that in and of itself will cause a lot of other problems. So there's a lot of factors to take in, to consideration for this, this sort of a thing, and I'm glad that you guys have all been, been taking these things into consideration. Councilman Bunson.
So the CDC came out, CDC came out with the 15 day, what did they mention about business?
It's mostly a directive geared towards people and gatherings and so forth. I'll hand you the printed copy. Feel free to breeze through that, a little bit late notice on that. But I do think that that coincides nicely with when I expect to see the peak of this thing.
So I, you know, personally, I think we need to be ready. So I would ask our attorney to draft that ordinance tomorrow. And if there is something that, because this is just an ever-changing event, I mean, we can't predict what, what's going to happen tomorrow. So if, you know, if we can wait till Monday, fine, but if there is some kind of new event, I think we need to call a special meeting and, and act, especially when you, when you consider the, the time that we have to go through to even get this to be effective.
Councilman Ronan.
Thank you, Ken, Mayor. You know, I think that's a great suggestion. At least we could have that first reading possibly earlier than, than Monday. Then if we, if we are ready to pull the trigger on it, we can be several days ahead of time. And I think that's a, and if we don't, then we don't have to schedule.
Right. And my preference is that we don't, but, you know, and completely understand and work with small businesses, completely understand the impact that this has on them. But the impact is also, I mean, to that, that server that gets exposed. Now, maybe that probability is small, you know, I, I'm not sure. But it, you know, that impact is still there for that person. They just lost their job because they're going to be quarantined over this. So I don't know how we get, get past that, but I think it's, it's just too critical to avoid it.
I concur.
To ignore it.
Councilman Ronan.
Thank you again. Then I've got one other thought. You know, by, by holding this meeting, we are exceeding the CDC recommendations, we are exceeding the governor's order that was issued earlier today, that is issued and, and is directed to municipalities. You know, I know that, that in state government, they do telephonic meetings that comply with the open meetings rules. I know that we can do it through Zoom and do it as a video conference. And I realize we still have to have a, a place, a location where the public can, can view or, or hear the meeting, but, but there's no reason that we're not doing this. This is, doing this meeting today is, is hopefully okay, but there may come a time when it's not okay. And so I would ask that we task administration with determining a way that we can have a meeting that is compliant with these recent recommendations.
The other thing I would like to remind people, especially the people that are tuning into this, is a lot of this falls on the public's back. You need to be responsible, you need to follow the guidelines and recommendations. You know, we like to help you out as best we can, but we're not your, your guardian, you know? I mean, take those preventative measures yourself, protect the people around you that are very susceptible. Some of that falls on you. There's 265 cases that I see that have, are pending results. That probably means, judging from the previous numbers, that there's probably a handful more, maybe 10 or so cases that will emerge in South Dakota just from the tests that have been taken. So the numbers will continue to grow, and that's an expected trend. There's no reason to freak out because these numbers continue to grow. These aren't new cases popping up, they're test results that are coming back. So I think if we take some of this stuff in moderation and, and look at it from kind of a global perspective, we'll all be doing better. So we'll continue to do those things, those preventative measures. And I think that I'm really satisfied with the methods that the hospital has taken to protect this very vulnerable people that are sick and elderly. So we'll continue to do those things, and I'll continue to work with private businesses personally and individually, and hopefully to move those things in the right direction. Councilman Josh.
You know, to kind of go back to what Mark said previously, is some restaurants and bars has voluntarily closed and some haven't. I, I think it would be nice for us to have at least the ability to enact something if we needed to. And I agree with the comments that are made, I would prefer not to. I would prefer everyone voluntarily obey the governor's order, but if, if not, it'd be nice for us to have something available to us in a short amount of time if we needed to. And I think it's also important to think about, as the mayor alluded to, the economic impact of this. Some of these businesses that close for, let's say it's eight weeks, might not reopen. So if there's some things we can do as a community, I think it's also wise for us to maybe work with the chamber or, or other local organizations like that, to see if there are some things we can do as a community to help support some of these businesses that are going to be affected by this. I'm not sure what that looks like. I'm not sure if that's buying gift cards or, or something to that effect, but as a community, I think we would all agree that once this is over and done with, we still want to have restaurants, and we still want to have people working there, that people haven't gone on to find other, other work. So if there's something we can do in that area, and I'd like to explore it as well.
I think we got a taste of it tonight with the ride line numbers. That's significant. People are already doing a lot of the things that they need to be doing. So, but I think this council needs to encourage those that are still remaining open bars, restaurants for, and you need to seriously consider, you need to close now and help your, your.
Community.
Your community, but help your staff, because they're the ones, the frontline people that could, could be exposed to someone that doesn't even know that they, they have it. Seems to be the story time and time again. So again, I'm not, you know, I completely understand the impact that this has, and it's already had. I mean, it's troubling with, how we're going to pull out of this. And South Dakota is kind of, I think, towards the tail end of that, I'm hoping. None of us can predict that this is going to be done May 2nd. We have no clue. I'm hoping that the, the tests that, they're trying to get this down to a 45-minute test happens soon, instead of waiting four or five days to get results. That would be a game changer, if that could happen really soon. And hopefully that, I think that was this week. But, so I think we have to stress to our community that they need to do everything they possibly can to quarantine themselves. Let's stop the spread of this.
Councilman Olson.
Yes, I, I'm just really pleased at the response our community has had. I've, I've seen it in so many places and heard it from so many people. But I agree with the mayor, your comments on the impact that this is going to have on our community. But I also want to be prepared. This is a time to unify. We know what our federal government is doing, we know now what our governor is proposing. I think we need to fall in that line and be prepared. We don't know what's going to happen in three to five days, but if we're prepared, then we're able to act and do what's necessary. So I'm in favor of, of doing this as quickly as possible, so that we're prepared, if it's necessary.
And, and I think, you know, going to the quarantining, if a bar is open because another bar isn't, that is actually prolonging a potential problem, where if you shut down, you shut down for a week or two, you may have prevented any new cases from coming out or any spread, and we could be done with this in a much quicker time and knock it out of the park, so everyone is back up to full strength before we even have to worry about some of these issues. So if you can stop the spread, and of course, people don't travel or anything like that to areas where the infection is more robust, then we are actually in a better situation than, than where we are now. Having one case, if you follow the projection, we could have two cases, three cases, 20 cases, this could go up real quickly in those areas. And you can see that in a lot of areas where they didn't get control of this, it rose fast and it rose quick.
May I?
Lynn.
Let me comment about robust, and I think I would not fulfill my duties if I don't, didn't talk about what's happened within the last week, about the preventive measures and the response, and how quickly the communities respond. On March 14th, United Way put together a group meeting, and this was before we had, you know, group distancing and stuff, where there were, the hospitals were there, large business was there, recreation was there, business was there, and they were somewhat lost and they had some concerns. And so I have to give Scott Midas a lot of credit, he turned around Sunday and then activated the emergency control center. And then from there, all the volunteers went in and they went through and they addressed all these community cer, concerns. And they actually now have kind of deactivated, where if it's necessary, they'll activate once again. But to tell you how much things have changed, you know, they talked about on the 14th, they opened on Sunday, partially, and then Monday they went full operation, and then Wednesday they went partial operation. But then on the 20th, which was last Friday, there was a news conference about some of the findings and some of the recommendations, but within an hour after that, the governor had talked to the cities of the first class about what we were going to do in reference to bars and restaurants. And so hourly, it's been changing. And so I also put together, I have received no comments from anybody, I put together a city hall temporary closing to the public. We are still open to the public, but I will also say that the public has in itself done social distancing with the various. various different offices of the city, which I'm very pleased to say, it didn't require us at this point. I didn't think that I should do it at a point when we didn't have any Brown County positive cases, but that may change as time goes on. But are, are there any questions about what we've done to date for the various different business, city operations? You know, as you know, the library is closed, however, they have a lot of, of online stuff that they can do with people that are at home and aboard and looking, a lot of it's free. Parks is closed right now as far as the recreation programs. However, I've been reading CDC, and we're thinking about opening the golf course tomorrow, but in opening the golf course, we're not going to allow league, and we're going to not allow any tournaments, we're not going to have any tables within the golf course where you can sit down. You come in and you register, and then we're talking about single within the carts. And so, we're trying to address what's going on, but at the same time, be practical.
Trying to rent more carts, aren't you?
Councilman Johnson has something.
I was speaking with Rich Crokel at the airport this morning, and our passenger load is typically 80%, which on a 50-seat CRJ would be 40 of the 50 seats filled. This morning's 5:00 AM flight, the total passenger count was three. So, people are either being compliant or fearful, or some combination.
Also, the chief, as well as the fire chief, are going through a protocol where they're checking their employees every day when they come into work, going through the questionnaire and asking about the sore throat, and seeing if they have a temperature. And so, we're really being cautious about what workforce we have, because if someone gets sick in the police department, it's going to have a very negative impact, because we don't have that many employees.
So I think one of the things that, oh, sorry, consider in the next month or two, and I think Lynn has this, the human resources person is, is making this contact, but we, we are in the midst of trying to find a new city manager, and though that is going to take place here in the next couple months, so we should really consider whether we, we push that off for three months, six months, and see if we can get Lynn to commit to staying with us. I just don't, personally, I don't believe it's the right time. I think city managers are, are dealing with their own communities, and I'm not sure they would be interested in coming to visit us at that time.
An alternate suggestion, if we just say this is a public emergency, we don't even have to meet, I can do everything by proclamation?
For the next three months or so?
Lightning, lightning the mood.
Get the militia put together.
It'll be your own show.
That's right, that's right.
At the same point, Ron, is it possible if, you know, because the decision is totally up to Lynn, can we appoint an interim city manager? You know, because the decision is up to Lynn, I don't feel like I want to strong-arm someone who's maybe got fishing plans for sometime in July, but, you know.
They're not going to allow them on the water, anyway.
There's provision in the charter, I believe, for appointment of the interim folks.
It's a consideration that we need to be thinking about.
That's a good idea, Dave.
So may I, mayor-
Ron, go ahead.
I'd like to kind of respond to, I'm not sure where we're at with, with my drafting an ordinance for the council to consider. Is there a consensus that you would like something drafted?
Yes.
For Wednesday?
I'm not, I'm not saying that we call a meeting today. I'm, I'm saying that we need to get it done as soon as possible, so if things change, maybe we need to have a special meeting. So I'm not, I'm not asking for a meeting on Wednesday, but it should be done soon.
I would like to propose this to the council. The, the governor's executive order came out as, as primarily a guidance, because my colleagues across the state are, as city attorneys, are trying to figure out what they should be doing for their municipalities. And they're drafting what they think that should look like. Well, today comes the guidance from the, from the governor, that helps us identify, at least from, from her. And I will say that this is very thoughtful, the work that she's doing has been, has been very comprehensive, that, that now that we see her executive order, I think you should allow me to draft two ordinances, one that looks like what the other cities are doing, and the other that looks like what it is that Governor Noem is telling us for you to look at. And so I've got Rapid City, Yankton, I've got all that that I can use and put something together that looks similar to that. And I've also got her executive order that I can put together something that looks like what you're seeing in that executive order, which is-
Yeah, I like it.
So I'll, I'll present both of those to you.
Excellent.
But, but I differ with, with Dave. I would like to, to have the special meeting whenever it would be convenient for you to have those ready, and at least get that first reading out of the way, so that we are nimble, so that we, we will have that, five days will have passed, or quickly, before we could have our second reading, and maybe we would need to do that on an emergency basis next week, and at least it would clear the way for us to do that.
I agree.
Well, I can commit to provide you with both of these by close of business tomorrow. So it's up to you as to when you think you want, you would want to do that.
Then I would request that the mayor would call a special meeting for Wednesday.
I will call a special meeting for Wednesday, or are we thinking at 5:30, like we do these meetings?
I think.
Yep.
I have a conflict Wednesday, I would prefer Thursday. No, wait, I have a conflict Thursday, too. I'll make it work Wednesday.
Do we need to have it, do we need to have it maybe a little later for you, Alan, or?
No, I will push something off.
Okay, sounds good. So we're looking at a meeting to be called for Wednesday at 5:30, to review Ron's proposed ordinances for this, for this matter?
One thing, are we looking at trying to, to look at a Zoom or, or some other method of meeting? Are we looking at, what, what's the, I mean, I think we have to look at it, at the possibility, I don't know if we can get all that together that quick or not?
Yeah, what's, what's, what was the?
It's like a go-to meeting.
Be happy to stay within their offices, so it only be-
They should.
I want to disagree.
The only, the only other thing is, you know, when we were working with the EOC, they had the, the Zoom or go-to meeting, whichever program you want to use, they were utilizing that. Maybe they can assist with helping-
I was on the receiving side of that, and I only heard half of the meeting. The quality was less than what I recall. The need, if you want to go into this mode for the future, because there's an expectation for the public, we finally, after many years of having inferior equipment and inferior meeting place, have come to the level of meeting the expectations to the public for sound, and I hate to destroy that in one or two meetings because we're trying to shortcut.
You have a thermometer ready, you can take our temperature when we want.
Councilman Rice.
I, I think it's important, because the people watching this at, at home, or people who might hear about it secondhand, aren't probably going to have a copy of Noem's executive order. And so let me just be clear here, to what we're speaking about in terms of restaurants and bars, and diners and coffee shops. I'm just going to read that section real quick, it's not very long, just to clarify exactly what this wording says. It's, "In dealing with any enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings within the state of South Dakota, what they should do is suspend or modify business practices as recommended by CDC guidance that involve 10 or more people to be in an enclosed space where physical separation of at least six feet is not possible. Continue offering or consider offering business models that do not involve public gatherings, including takeout, delivery, drive-through, curbside service, off-site services, social distancing models, or other innovative business practices that do not involve public gatherings in an enclosed space. And consider business arrangements, innovative ideas intended to support the critical infrastructure sectors as defined by the Department of Homeland Security." So I just wanted to read that to say, we're not closing these businesses. They can still stay in business with takeout, curbside, things of that nature. Just wanted to clarify that before we, the end of the meeting.
It doesn't say anything about casinos in here.
That's true.
That came up today. So.
Yeah, I mean, the 10, the 10-person maximum is really-
But aren't they a bar?
What's that?
They have a liquor license, they're considered a-
They all have a liquor license, yes.
It, it mentions, this includes facilities operating as a bar, restaurant, brewery, cafe, casino.
Oh, casinos listed there. So we're, we're going to post this on the website, the executive order? I know it's on probably the state website, but can we post-
We'll put it on our city website. We'll put it under COVID-19.
Yeah.
Great.
And if you are feeling ill, stay home.
I'm sure there'll be coverage in the American news also on this subject.
Hopefully tomorrow, not Sunday.
Oh, man.
I'm sorry, sorry, but.
Anything else before we adjourn? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Say it.
Got a motion for Bunson, and a second for Olson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.